Okay, so. Let me, so rules of order, we follow Robert's rules of order and all the, any rule that we adopt at our annual planning meeting. I would like to say at this time that if, where we're. Live streaming this, that if you have any public comments that you want to make during that part of the agenda. Please email those to me at D Hamilton at Ellsworth main.gov. That's D Hamilton at Ellsworth main.gov. And I'll read those. Feel free to send those in now, so I can have those in the queue. If you have a comment for any of other items that are on the agenda, you can email it at that time, the same email address. So with that, we move on to, and I should say that all counselors are present. So I didn't know before adoption of the Ellsworth City Council minutes from April 20th, 2020 regular meeting and the May 4th, 2020 emergency meeting.
Oh, move.
Second.
It was moved by Council Blanchett, seconded by Council Miller. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? No opposition? It passes.
Hey Dale.
Yes.
Nicole Grohowski said that the YouTube stream is not working right now.
So it is working on, should be on Facebook. Cable on the cable spectrum. So if, obviously, if you're watching YouTube, you're not going to get this message. But. Facebook should be working, so. I don't know, Jason, Jason's listening, so he might be able to fix that.
It's on YouTube now. I just about.
Okay, it, great. Thank you, Jason. Alright, so item number five, city managers report.
A few items. The budget process has begun, the budget committee meetings, there's already been one and there are meetings scheduled for May 21st and 28th. And June 1st, 8th and 11th, so you can tune in. On YouTube and Facebook as well as email your questions to the council chair. Secondly. The city hall is in the process of reopening, at least reopening to the new realities of the world. We are now open by appointment on Tuesdays and Fridays. So far, so good. We're walking before we run. We're hoping by June 1st to be fully reopened again. You know, limited by the guidance from the state and best practices and CDC requirements. Folks who've been working from home will be my back grading back to city hall. We've taken a number of precautions, Lexiglass. Where needed, where we're interfacing with the public, we're spreading our employees out where there were two people in an office before. We're taking advantage of other spaces to make sure that we can provide for social distancing. And also when a more normal regimen comes back. Meetings will be limited. To 10 until June 1st and then the governor has said going up to. Groups of 50, however, you still have to allow the social distancing, though even in our council chambers, which would normally see over 50 people. It more likely be 20 or low 20s in terms of what you could accommodate, so. Likewise, we're looking at recreation programs. The Harbor Parks opened June 1st. But guidance, we're waiting on guidance from the state in terms of recreational activities and as to what the rules may be. And what might be able to be accommodated, working with our partners at the YMCA. And, and the other groups, we don't know what can be accommodated this summer, but we're waiting on that guidance. Finally, I want to say goodbye to my deputy city manager of five years, Tammy Mo, who's going to be the controller for Redmond and Winchell. She's been a great partner, trusted and competent and always had my back, so congratulations Tammy, good luck to you. I know you'll do a great job. No more night meetings.
Thank you, David. Appreciate that.
And that's all I have.
Any questions? Alright, so just remind the public citizens' comments are coming up, so if you have anything, please email me, D Hamilton at Ellsworth main.gov. Item number six, committee reports. Have there been any committee meetings?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Counselor Kaplan and Counsel Miller and I sat in on the public safety meeting, had a very interesting discussion with all those involved. I guess it comes down that the council need to discuss with a tad more information that we now have, how to, how to proceed with that, whether we want to relinquish the license, go the limited license or. Get our feet in the water, but that's a full council discussion. We do have more information than we had before and, and at some point. We need to sit down as a group and, and decide with the information we've got, what direction to, to finally go in with that. But there is more information for us available to have a, a good discussion about that at this point.
Counsel Phillips, what, what is your recommendation? Do you, do you see a workshop?
We could do a workshop with the, with the. Rest of the committee members, but I think probably before that, that it would be just as well that the council has a chance to discuss it. And see what the seven members consensus is on moving ahead with this. We've got some ideas. Mr. Cole had some, some good points about how we proceed from there, but we can limit the license. We can rescind the license or we can start getting into it and, and trying to figure out how we're going to serve and how we're going to protect the firefighters and go ahead with it. That's going to, that would need to be a full council discussion.
Okay, so. Put it on the June agenda? Would that make sense?
Probably a good idea for public discussion. Yes, sir.
Okay. And we will do that. Questions? Any comments? Okay, so moving in, any other committees? Have met? Been around seeing none? Alright, so item number seven is public comments, citizens' comments. At this point, I do not have any that have come in. I would like to use this as an opportunity, if we were meeting live, a step down and just make a citizen's comment, just, I just wanted to. One, say that I think from the city perspective, this obviously has been a very difficult period of time. I've been very impressed with. The level of dialogue in the community and the responsiveness of the community businesses to. Find that balance of. Opening the economy, opening the city while also maintaining safety. But the other thing that I wanted to say is that I just wanted to extend appreciation to the. Principal Clifford and his team at the high school. I have a senior graduating this year. I know Mike, you're out here and you do too. And I just really appreciate the effort that's being made to provide those seniors with the best opportunity for the experience that, that they deserve. But I really want to extend some comments to the senior class. In terms of the class that they have in managing this, this has been very difficult for them and they've really handled it well, so I just wanted to extend that to them. Alright, and I have a couple comments coming through. Okay, so. This is coming through from Nadine Lewis. Is, she said that there is a rodent problem where she lives and there is standing water. Does the city have any control over this? So I'm not sure the nature of the standing water. It's kind of, I think it'd be hard to give any kind of definitive. Response without knowing the full circumstances. But who, Manager Cole, who should she reach out to to have that conversation?
I'd start with our code enforcement officer Dwight Tilton. And I'm not sure that if this is. On, it sounds like it's on private property, but I'll talk to Dwight Tilton in the morning.
Okay, so if you can reach out to Dwight Tilton and raise that question, he can give you a much better answer for, for that question.
And obviously, if there's a root cause where the public works director or others can weigh in, you know, we'll, we'll go in that direction.
I do not have any other comments at this time, so we'll move on to item number eight, presentation of awards. First is to Tammy Mo for 20 years of service with the city of Ellsworth in various capacities. And as we heard Manager Cole state. Tammy is leaving the city. I've never really challenged her on anything because I know that she actually knows karate, so I've kind of scared clear of that. Right, Tammy? Yeah.
Long story. And she'll use it too, trust me.
But Tammy, I, in the, in the time that I've been on the council for almost three years now. Your level of knowledge, commitment, what you bring to the city is just unmatched and certainly will be a loss for the city. And I just, I will extend, and I'm sure other counselors will want to say something as well, but really appreciate everything that you've done for the city. If people could see. The amount of effort and work you put into, they would realize just what an asset you are to the city of Ellsworth, so thank you.
Thank you for those kind words.
Well, I've worked with Tammy probably longer than you Dale and she's always been spot on. Good friend and a great asset to the city. I'm sad to see her go. I wish her luck in her new endeavors. Hopefully, it's not quite as stressful as the job you have now.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure. I want to thank the council. I want to thank all the staff. It's been. A great 20 years. I know. 20 years ago, when I started in May, I said, when people were getting awards for 20 years and I was like, oh my goodness, how can they be here for 20 years? They're so old and here I am, now I'm the old one.
Not so much.
Thank you very much.
I don't know who I'm going to have to fix all my problems now. This is awful.
Alright. So also recognizing Lori Roberts for 20 years of service with the city of Ellsworth in various capacities. Again, 20 years, significant amount of time. Thank you very much Lori for all the services you provided to the city as well. Hopefully, I know she's on, but.
He is on the line.
Hopefully she heard that.
You don't have automatic retirement at 20 years, Lori. Looking to have you on for a long time more.
And then Dwight Tilton for 15 years of service as the code enforcement officer. I do not think Dwight is on right now. Hopefully, he's listening. Thank you Dwight. Again, 15 years, long time, lot of service, a lot of knowledge, so thank you. And then Carrie Taylor for five years of service with the city of Ellsworth in various capacities. Thank you, Carrie. And hopefully, when we're able to convene back at city hall, we can bring back all the individuals who have been recognized while we've been. Doing it this way and be able to say thank you in person.
Tammy, you have to come back.
Alright, unfinished business, consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Council order number 052002 requested the city manager to hold a special municipal school budget validation referendum. Election on July 14th, 2020 for the purpose of validating the school budget in conjunction with the state of Maine primary election. Council order number 052003 requested the city clerk for appointment of wardens and ward clerks for the four voting districts within the city of Ellsworth. For the July 14th, 2020, city of Ellsworth school budget validation special municipal referendum, referendum election. And council order number 052004 requested the city clerk for approval on setting the polling places opening time as 8:00 AM for the July 14th, 2020. City of Ellsworth school budget validation special municipal referendum election. Anybody want any of those removed? If not, is there a motion?
Move approval, Mr. Chairman, as presented.
You have a motion by Counsel Phillips, seconded by.
Second.
Counsel Kaplan. Any further discussion? Anyone opposed? All in favor?
Yes.
And any extensions? Motion passes. New business. Item number 12, public hearing in action on the applications for issuance, issuance for the following licenses. I'm assuming everything is in order with the, yes, thank you. Shimbashi Incorporated DBA Shimbashi Restaurant, 139 High Street for renewal of a city class C license. Vitular and liquor and renewal of a state restaurant class 1, 2, 3, 4 malt, spiritus and vinous liquor license. If anybody from the public wants to comment, please email me now. I'll open up the public meeting and while that's being open, I'll go back to the counselors to see if you have any comments.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There is a comment on the Q and A from Nadine Lewis asking if citizens are allowed to speak.
Okay, yes.
Having said that, I don't know if she is. If she had to defer to Jason, but, or. Allow, get the comments to you.
Yes, and so let me, while we're waiting, I know we have a public hearing, it's, it's been open. Let me address this while waiting to see if anybody has a response and if you have, if you're going to weigh in on any of the public hearings, please do so. Feel free to send your comments now. So the question is, I think is, I'd like to say that I think is very unfortunate that city council does not allow real live interaction with the public citizens of the city. The taxpayers, is this being conducted in accordance with the city charter? So I would just point out that we are trying to provide the opportunity for input to the best of our ability, given the, the circumstances that we're under. And while I won't read this, it's at the beginning of the agenda, which you can find online, but this is in accordance with. With rules and statute that exists, which allow for this kind of. Structure, given the pandemic situation. It certainly is not the preferred way of operating, but it's the only way that we have at the moment. So please feel free, if you have any comment, I will read them. I will read your name and your comment. You can send your comments to me at D Hamilton at Ellsworth main.gov. And, and that's the best way that we can manage it until we're able to reconvene in person, which we are talking about and we will certainly move in that direction as soon as possible. So back to the hearing that is open, I. Do not see any comments on that, so I will close the public hearing. Counselors?
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion to approve Counsel Phillips, seconded by Counsel Miller. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. All those opposed? Abstained. Counsel Phillips has way too much fun with this. Motion passes. Charles B. and Ariella L. Zucker, DBA Twilight Motel, 147 Bucksport Road for renewal of a city lodging license. I will open the public hearing. While that's open, waiting for comment, any comments by the counselors? I know there's a lag, so I will give it a moment. Seeing no comments, I'll close the public hearing. Counselors?
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve by Counsel Kaplan, seconded by Counsel Moore. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
All those opposed? And even abstaining? Motion passes. And the next is Manny's Greek Grill LLC, 248 State Street N for renewal of a city class C licensed liquor. And vitular and renewal of a state restaurant class 3 and 4 malt and vinous liquor license. I'll open the public hearing. While it's open, turn to the counselors for any comment. We'll just pause here. Not seeing any comments coming in, so I will close the public hearing. Counselors?
Move to approve, please.
Second.
Motion to approve Counsel Miller, seconded by Counsel Kaplan. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes, 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 yes.
Anyone opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion passes. Item 13, presentation by Kevin Bunker of Developers Collaborative regarding requested tax increment financing TIF assistance for proposed 29-unit senior housing project off Foster Street. Manager Cole?
I'd like to introduce you to Kevin Bunker from Developers Collaborative. For those who've been on the council a while, Kevin presented to council, I believe, three years ago regarding the Oriole Way project up off Washington Street. As you all know. He and his company have been promoting, I believe it's 51 units, new units behind the Shaw's Plaza over more towards Foster Street, including. Including senior housing as well as market workforce housing as well. And in the process, we've been discussing a TIF, tax increment financing. Arrangement, which is consistent with other projects. The city has done for Leonard Lake Housing, for example. That, my estimation is a favorable deal to the city, makes sense, and I thought it would be good. We're not asking for any action tonight. I just thought we'd take the opportunity to have Kevin go over with you what they have proposed and how the project would work and. The economics of it, which make a lot of sense for the city of Ellsworth. Kevin?
Hi, good evening. Can you all hear me okay? See me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. So thank you for having me here tonight. I'm here to discuss a project I'm working on, which is really a, a second phase of some work that I've been working in the city for some time. And I have, do I have the ability to screen share from my laptop, guys?
We do, yes.
Okay, cool. Okay, well, I'm just going to pop that up real quick, just so you can orient yourselves. I assume most of you know the area that we're talking about, but I'm going to put that up anyway. And let's see if we can get that to go. But you see that, okay?
Very well.
So this is, this is, I'm just showing the, the area. I'm not going to dig in on the details of the site plan because they're, they're not particularly relevant to what we're talking about tonight, nor I know if you have the time, but I can if you want. This will just generally orient you to the area. Can you see my cursor as well, my little hand here?
Yes.
So here you have the Rennies and the Shaw's, this is High Street Route 1, and then Washington Street above and Foster Street below. And I began working with the owners of the Rennie Shaw's Plaza about three years ago to turn some excess land that was part of their property. But which wasn't really being used by them in a productive way to turn into housing. And the first phase of that became Oriole Way, which is sort of the upper part. You see Oriole Way. Bisechs all the way from Washington to Foster and we ended up building 50 apartments along this upper section right here, sort of two offset polygons there. At the time, we talked about wanting to do a second phase with some market rate housing, wanted to come back when that was feasible. So that was one thread. Actually, what, what I first came to Ellsworth. To look at housing, I was asked to, Senator King and others asked me to come talk about workforce housing because it was a, a big need for, for the. Seasonal workforce and others, and that's what first got me coming to Ellsworth, but then this opportunity came along for Oriole Way. Seemed to fit with some other initiatives that were going on and went forward, but we always wanted to do some market rate as well. And then a second strand that kind of ties into this was the senior housing bond that was passed by the voters several years ago, was just signed into law. Just this past, I believe, January, so that freed up additional funds for senior affordable housing, so at that point, we decided to try and see if we could fit both on the site. So the additional land that's left over that we are purchasing from the owners of the Rennie Shaw's is a really funny looking piece, but it's essentially this whole chunk here. Except for these two cutouts. This here is not part of it and this little guy here is not a part of it, but it's this, all the rest of this irregularly shaped polygon is the. The piece we have under contract to purchase now and zoom in just a bit. So you can see what phase two looks like a little more closely and you'll see that the, there's three buildings are proposing, one right here. This is the senior housing we're talking about tonight. It's a 29 unit apartment building and then here the two 12 unit market rate apartment buildings and we're proposing a new lot line. Right along here, so that the senior affordable housing would be in this lot around, right around three acres, I believe, and then the. The market rate housing would be in this lot down here. It'd be a phased project and the piece that's ready to go forward now is the affordable housing. And so we are coming back to talk to you about a tax increment financing district and I. I'm not sure if it'll be its own district or if it'll just be an extension of the Oriole Way district, but it'd be on similar terms. There's no, just to be clear, there's no TIF that's proposed for the market rate housing at all. That would be outside the TIF district and that would stand on its own. So I'm gonna, I can talk about, anyone has any questions, I'll stop for a second before I stop sharing and then I'll start talking about the. Timeline of the project and then some of the economics as David stated. Any questions at this point?
Yes.
Okay, hearing none, I'm going to.
I have.
And, okay, I, I can't see the hands. I'm going to stop the share so I can see the hands.
I have a couple of questions. First off, can you define market rate housing?
Market rate housing is, I can define it in general and I can define what it means here. In general, it means everything that does not have. Some sort of rent restriction on it. It's determined by the open market and this particular, so market rate housing is everything from a luxury condo all the way down to an unassisted workforce unit. And in this case, market rate housing means rents of around $1,300 a month for a two-bedroom unit.
Okay, and I thought we had issues with overflow and water and sewer issues because of the number of apartments that were being put in that area. Has that been rectified?
It has. It, it wasn't so much due to the number of apartments, it was due to some of the site work and the timing of it. Coming in at the wrong time, when it was too late for the grass to catch. We did struggle with our builders a little bit, but we. Have gone ahead and spent extra money to fix those problems. I think we're doing a pretty good job that we've done that now. I would let the city chime in. They've been working with us hand in hand to get that done. So I think we're in a pretty good place with all that now. It is a, it's a challenging site. We spent a lot of time on this phase of the project and the last phase, thinking about how to deal with the fact that. thinking about how to deal with the fact that, one, there are ravines right on the other side of our property, and two, that the shopping center has a lot of impervious surface and a lot of drainage, and there are a lot of pipes that go actually even under our buildings and under our site and outlet on the other side and put water onto the other buildings that have been built down below at the bottom of those ravines. So it's a, it's a challenging situation. And we came in and did our project when it was under construction. It became worse for a time before we were able to improve and make it better. And I defer to city staff to add to that. But we have also spent a lot of time on the design of this project to actually go above and beyond the ordinance and spend extra money and do extra planning to keep stormwater off our neighbors. So we're taking that seriously, and I believe we've done a good job to address it. But yes, there have been issues.
Okay. And is this more of a fifty-fifty split market rate and senior housing? Or is it mostly TIF housing and some market rates?
It's about fifty-fifty. It's twenty-nine senior units and twenty-four market rate units, but the market rate units are bigger. Market rate units are all two bedrooms, so there's forty-eight bedrooms of market rate and only twenty-nine bedrooms of senior, because the seniors are all one bedrooms and studios.
Okay, so the market rate would be taxed at the regular rate, whereas the senior housing would get a tax break?
Yeah, we'd get a TIF, and I'll, let's leave the whole TIF discussion until we get to the TIF. But yeah, yeah, exactly.
Beautiful.
I might, on the drainage issue, the first project, Oriole Way, drained in the direction of Washington Street. And as Mr. Bunker indicated there, there were issues, but they were addressed, and Kevin personally came up and addressed them. But the projects on Foster Street are going to drain in that direction. And the proposal that they're working out would involve an upgrade to the existing storm line down Foster Street. So it's an improvement for the city as well as an accommodation for these, for these units.
Sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
So who pays for those, for increasing the amount of drainage? Does the taxpayer pay for that, or are you paying for that, Mr. Bunker?
I'm paying for it.
Oh, it's, it's, I believe, a good arrangement for the city. And also offer out to that on the senior housing, the city council commissioned a study in two thousand and fifteen looking at the need of senior housing in the area, and it was quite acute. As a matter of fact, they did a survey. They reached out, and normally, if you can get two or three hundred people to respond to a survey in the area in terms of the housing needs, you're doing well. I believe we hit seven or eight hundred. That was the level of interest. And it did demonstrate a very much need for this kind of housing in the area. And I believe that is why the main state housing, they only awarded seven projects, and this was one of them. Except for this site. If it doesn't work at this site, that money is gonna go away and go to some other community. Is that correct, Kevin? Yeah. So I just wanted to, this does follow the city, you know, what the city has pushed over the last five years. It's, I think we're lucky to have a developer of Kevin's caliber come in and address it.
Right, one comment that's come in, I just wanna read it. Mr. Chairman, this partnership was right and a benefit for Ellsworth initially. Still a great deal for Ellsworth. Shields the value of the project from state evaluation regarding educational support, revenue sharing, LRAP, county taxation in any program with evaluation in the formula, and improves the housing stock for elderly and workers in our area. Thank you, Kevin, for believing in our city. And I'm gonna read it as it's written, Gary Fortier has been.
I didn't commission that, but it sounds like someone who knows what they're talking about with regards to tips, anyway.
And Counselor Kaplan, I think that when Mr. Bunker goes through his scenario, the magic of tax increment financing, how the numbers work, in the end, it's a win-win for both the city and the developer. But Kevin, you're gonna get to that next, correct?
Yes. And everybody okay if I, if I move on and get into the mechanics of the TIF? Okay, so we are at a, at a point in the project where we've done, we've got a notice to proceed for main housing. So based on that, we've commissioned detailed architectural designs, gone to the planning board. So at this point, we probably got close to two hundred thousand dollars invested in cash and are hoping to get to a closing by August or so. A lot, a lot of work going on, a lot of phases to make this happen. And the TIF is something that we talked about from the beginning with the city, with David and others. But now we're at the point where we want to formally ask for it and to support our operating budget. And we came up with a structure that we think works pretty well. But just a little bit of TIF, Housing TIF 101. I assume as counselors, you guys have been exposed to TIFs, so you know generally what they are. Generally, when there's development coming into an area, you're going to see an increase in the taxable value in that. But then offsetting that extra dollar of tax revenue or dollar of assessed value, you have negative impacts because you lose state aid to education based on your valuation. You, your county taxes go up and you lose revenue sharing. So that for every dollar you make in increased taxes, you lose, typically, communities across Maine will lose forty to sixty cents of that in those impacts. And what a TIF does is basically shelters you. The word shelter gets thrown around a lot, that it shelters you against the loss of those impacts. So that's, if I were a city councilor, I would say that's all well and good. But then what happens to the money that gets sheltered? Does it get spent on pork projects that I wouldn't wanna do anyway? Or does it get spent on things that I can use and that make my city better? And then that's really where the debate is a lot of times. So, but with main housings, affordable housing, tax credit projects, a TIF is nearly always a feature of them. And that is because they're competitive projects and they're, they're hard to, hard to win, hard to, communities generally want them. Not always, but there are enough communities in Maine that want them and help developers compete for them that main housing awards points for doing it. And also, a lot of times, they're required to make a project's operating budget feasible, particularly in the non-urban counties of York and Cumberland, where the rents are a little bit lower. Because the, the idea with a tax credit project, and I could do tax credit finance 101, 202 if you want, but basically, the, the tax credit program gives, gives developers tax credits and financing so that they can build a project without a significant mortgage. Therefore, and in return, the developer covenants to keep the rents at a fixed level for perpetuity, basically. So it's capital to build the housing. It's not operating funds to run the housing. So therefore, the housing has to run on its own steam. And a TIF is a, is a big help in a project like Ellsworth, in a place like Ellsworth, because the rents are tied to county median income or area median income, which in Maine is typically by county. And therefore, although the snow plowing and the electric and the heat might be slightly less expensive than, say, the Portland Metro, the rents are gonna be fifty, sixty percent of the Portland Metro. So you have a much tighter operating budget, much harder problem to operate them. And the property taxes untifed in Ellsworth are on the high side. So it's really necessary for feasibility on our side. A TIF, a housing TIF is different from an economic development TIF in a few key ways. It generally, the mechanics are similar. It's administered by main housing instead of DECD. One of the uses, the, one of the uses that's important for this discussion is that TIFs can be used for operating, operating support. Whereas in economic development TIFs, they may not be used directly for operating support. They may use, be used indirectly for operating support in the form of debt service, but not directly to offset operating costs. Where, as in main housing, the concept of the affordable housing TIF is in order to keep the rents affordable, you have to keep the expenses down, so the statute's a little bit different. So pretty much all the affordable housing TIFs that get done are used for that reason, to offset operating costs. They are not used to enrich the project for the developer. I get that question a lot. Main housing has underwrites the projects, and they underwrite everything to the same amount of free cash to the developer, which is about, which is a fixed developer fee and a fixed return on the, on the unit, which is around five hundred dollars a unit a year. So it's not a, it's not a get-rich-quick scheme, certainly for developers to run these things, but it is, it is needed to make it work. So the idea, if you have a TIF, either allows you to have basic feasibility, or if it takes you beyond basic feasibility, main housing will add amortizing debt to your, to your capital stack because what, they have scarce resources. And if they can give you a little bit of must-pay debt along with the subsidy and the tax credits, they'll do that. In this case, that, that doesn't even reach that point to do that, so there won't be any debt that gets added. But it does go directly back in to keep the rents affordable. It does not come to me, and I don't get to pull it out, nothing like that. I'll pause for a second and ask for any questions there, and then I'll get into the actual mechanics about this particular TIF works financially. Okay. I'm gonna try sharing screen again. I could go through it verbally, but I, that went so well the first time, I'm gonna try it again, so bear with me here. All right. TIF. Screen share. All right. So this is the TIF mechanics. And I'm, all I'm gonna say on the, on this, this table, this is the valuation table. The, the assessed value of the parcel today that we're talking about, the senior housings to be built on, is about a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. And we've been working with the assessor, so these aren't numbers we're making up, but the assessor's estimate of valuation is gonna be around, about just under three point five million. So, so at the tax rate, the current tax rate, that's about sixty-five thousand dollars a year in taxes. So you can see that it's, this is a, this is a, without getting into the details yet, it passes the first test of a property that's ripe for a TIF because there's a very large disconnect between today's, the value today and the value we're proposing. So whether or not any of it goes to the developer is the second question. But the first question is, it's a, it's a possible, very efficient use of a TIF because it's a low value going to a relatively high value. So this one is, looks at the captured valuation, which is the difference between those two values. It's almost all of it, but not all of it. So the increment is about sixty-three thousand dollars. And this particular proposal is for a period of thirty years to capture one hundred percent of that revenue, but to split it fifty-fifty between the project and the city. And there's a reason for that. There's a reason we don't do it at, that, that, what the project needs is a fifty percent TIF. So there's two ways to do that. One way is to shelter a hundred percent and give fifty percent to the project. The other way is to just shelter fifty percent and give it to the project. Now, the, the reason we chose to do it by sheltering all hundred percent will become clear in a minute, but this was after consultation with the city. This is a much more efficient way for you to help the project. Now, it wouldn't matter to me really either way, because the amount of subsidy coming into the operating budget would be the same. But if you think about the, the sheltering, it'll become clear. So if you, if you just sheltered fifty percent of the project and then dedicated that to the project, then, like I said, it would be, it would still work for me. But what would happen is the other fifty percent that went unsheltered would still be subject to those fiscal formulas. So of that thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars, a lot of it would be lost. You'd lose about half of it. Because if you lose around fifty cents on the dollar, you would have higher county taxes. You would have lost revenue sharing and lost state aid to education. So this, this number here shows the, the total avoided impacts for both halves. But your, your half would be half of this. So you would lose about sixteen thousand dollars of the taxes that you would still receive by not sheltering it. But by, by sheltering it, what happens is that you actually come, come out ahead of where you would have come out if you hadn't sheltered it at all. So you're actually being paid a small amount to do this. Now, the, for that to actually happen rests on a couple key assumptions. So first of all, is that the math has to work in your favor. And here, the math does, because you come out, the, the money, the amount of money that's gonna go into your general fund is slightly higher than if you had done nothing. So if you had done nothing, you would get the thirty-one, one oh five if you, if you had just tipped my half and not tipped your half. But if you, if you tipped both halves and then put the, your sheltered part in your general fund, you actually come out in year one about five hundred dollars ahead and increases over time. Now, that's all well and good, but the, the other TIF isn't just free money. The, the point of a TIF is that when that money is sheltered, it gets, gets placed in a segregated project account, and it can't be used for just anything. So the degree to which that actually benefits you is a degree to which that money you can put to use on things that you want to do. And the, the best possible use of money, most freest possible use of money would be the things that you're spending money on anyway. So a lot of times when we're doing workforce housing, we can just put the cost in the local school budget. You raise less money for the schools, and you come out ahead dollar for dollar. Here, we found a similar thing, although with senior housing, we can't use cost to local schools. But with senior housing, the challenge was to find something in your municipal budget that is an expense to you already, that you're spending money on anyway, and is not just a new expense. Like if I said, hey, shelter your fifty percent and put these great new streetlights in and build me this new sidewalk and give me this, this new water line, and then you'll spend that money on that. Well, you'd say, well, that's fine, Kevin, but are we really further ahead of if we had not done the project at all, because then we wouldn't have those costs? And there'd be some truth to that, and we'd be in a heavy debate about the merits of senior affordable housing and how was it worth doing these things? But in this particular case, you have a senior center that you're paying debt service on now. And it looks like, and my project manager, Laura Reading, and Tammy Moat have been working on this. And Tammy, I'm sorry to see you go too. I'm not sure who's gonna make David look so good now, but that's a concern. But I, I don't control that. But I've always really loved working with you, so I'm sorry to see you go. It's the first I've heard of it. But the, the debt is about three and a half, just under three and a half million dollars, and it looks like you guys are paying about two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars a year in debt service on that. That's an obligation that's happening now. And what you'll be able to do, you'll be able to take this thirty-one thousand dollars, and you'll be able to apply that to that debt service. So that's just thirty-one thousand dollars you're gonna have, less you're gonna have to ask the taxpayers for. And so really, there's no difference. Fiscally, there's very little difference to you in this TIF at all. You're actually making slightly more money than if you hadn't tipped it. So that was a pretty convoluted explanation. I hope it had enough clarity to help you see it. But you're actually gonna make a little bit of money doing this, and it's money you're spending anyway. So there's really no, it's, it's not an overstatement, it's not hyperbole. There is not a fiscal downside to this for the city of Ellsworth. So that's how it works. I guess it's probably time to stop now, and I can answer any questions, or we can have a discussion, or whatever you'd like to do. So I'm gonna stop the screen share now. I can pop it back up if it's helpful, but I'll, I'll stop it for the moment.
Questions, comments? Andrew Cole, the item, is there an action that we, we need to take this evening? Or was this the presentation, and we're coming back in the next meeting?
That would be correct. The expectation was presentation this meeting, and hopefully, a presentation of the application in action next meeting.
Okay. So with, with that, I would also strongly encourage the public that if you have any comments about this, that feel free to email any one of the council, counselors, all of us. And we will put this on our June agenda. Um, you, and we will put this on our June agenda for discussion and review and then voting. Any other questions for Kevin? Let me just check to make sure there's nothing else. Alright, I have no more comments this time. Um, thank you, Kevin, for, for that. It was very helpful.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna hop off, but if something pops back up, David, you can just text me. I'll hop back on. Alright, thank you all. Appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. Good presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, so um, item fourteen, council order number zero five two zero zero five, authorize the city manager to accept a twenty thousand dollar capacity development grant through the main drinking water program. Andrew Cole.
Uh, I guess I would, uh, the uh, city has been awarded a grant of twenty thousand dollars to the drinking water program. This is very good. It would be matched by another twenty thousand dollars of existing resources, correct? Uh, Reggie?
Yes.
Yes, and uh, uh, the money would go towards solving some issues, um, uh, design and capacity issues that uh, really need to get addressed. And I guess I would defer to Mr. Winslow as to uh, describe that for the council.
So um, not too long ago, we had our storage tanks redone um, to help with THMs and, or disinfection byproducts. Um, however, now we are seeing issues coming out of the plant. Um, and, and then there's the overall other issues with the integrity of the, the internal plumbing of the treatment plant and the building itself. Um, but more so the, the filters. Possibly adding another filter set would be looked at. Um, and, and overall, we're, we're getting towards violations and hopefully we can get away from that by doing this.
Any council's comments, questions? Any kind of motion?
Move to approve.
Counselor Kaplan, motion to approve, second by Councilmore. Further discussion? All those in favor? Dale? Yes?
Uh, can we, can we expand on that um, uh, move to approve uh, by limiting the amount uh, and where it's coming from and who we're hiring?
Okay, you want that? Sure.
Yeah, the, the, the motion is, the motion's in the, uh, in the item.
Counselor Kaplan, do you have that in front of you, any chance?
Yes. At the bottom of this page somewhere. Move to prove an ongoing uh, going into an engineering and design contract. Is that the right one?
Yeah, it's the one before that.
I have it here.
I can read it if you'd like.
Yeah, I believe, uh, move to authorize city manager to accept a capacity development grant in the amount of twenty thousand dollars from the main drinking water program and hire Woodard and Curran to complete the treatment plan evaluation associated with this grant award. Um, project to be funded from the awarded grant and the water department operating budget.
Councilmore, do you still second that?
Second.
Thank you, Council Blanchette. Further discussion? Okay, all of those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Item number fifteen, council order number zero five two zero zero six, request to award a design and engineering contract for the Water Street wastewater pump station project.
Good evening, counselors. Oh.
No, that's okay, Lisa. You run.
Okay, um, so this is gonna be um, Mike Harris, the wastewater superintendent is obviously also on. So we're both going to kind of um, discuss this one with you guys. But um, last fall, the city of Ellsworth was awarded a five hundred thousand dollar Northern Borders Regional Commission grant for work at our Water Street pump station. This work includes design and then construction to upgrade the wastewater pump station. Part of the requirements of the, for the engineering design work to be included in the reimbursable cost of this grant is that we have to do a request for proposal slash qualifications. As such, we prepared a request for qualifications and requested proposals from four firms of which two submitted proposals. The N B R C review team, um, score sheets were attached to review the two proposals that we received. And it is recommended, um, based on our review of the proposals that the engineering and design for this project to be awarded to Woodard and Curran. Any questions?
Counselors, no, no questions, comments?
So the hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars is for what specifically? Cause I saw at the end that there was like one point two million.
Yep, so, so the um, one hundred and eighty-three thousand is a not to exceed amount for engineering services. The one point five million is the estimated construction cost of the project. Of which we did receive the five hundred thousand dollar uh, grant to pay for a portion.
So this is for preliminary work, uh, complete design work, complete design and engineering.
And probably inspection.
Yep, yeah, there's a post-construction phase as well.
Yeah.
This is to do final design and take it through construction.
Does this have to, does this um, get reviewed by the state that they oversee this, or is it uh?
Nope. So for part of N B R C is that we have to meet their requirements and their requirements are that we do put it out for if a qualifications-based proposal, but ultimately we decide which firm we want to use. Um, I will say that the um, general, um, oh, I'm trying to think. It's normal for engineering costs to be twelve to fifteen percent of the construction costs. So this hundred and eighty-three thousand falls in um, that percentage or a reasonable dollar amount for a project of this size. And obviously, it's not just a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar check. It's a, you know, they have things they have to deliver in invoices they have to submit that we then submit to Northern Borders for reimbursement.
What is the um, projected um, build out time, turn from start to finish?
Um, the idea and part of their proposal was that they would start design as soon as possible in the hopes of doing construction, actually this winter when the pump station sees the lowest flows, so that we have the new upgraded pump station, hopefully by spring when we see our highest flows.
Thank you.
And forgive me, but the pump station that uh, was built, um, not near Dead River, but the one further up. Uh, when was that built?
So that's the treatment plant that was built, uh, what, seven years ago, Mike?
No, I think she saw, are you talking about um, uh, Counselor Kaplan? Are you talking about the pump station behind R F Jordan?
Uh, no, no, I was talking about the one, the wastewater treatment facility. So this station pumps everything from Lower Water Street up to that treatment facility?
No, 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 no. Um, roughly two thirds of the city go to the pump station behind R F Jordan. The pump station behind R F Jordan then pumps it to the main pump station that is where the old plant was on Water Street. And that big, big pump station pumps everything from the whole city up to the new treatment plant on Bayside Road. And so the plant, the pump station behind Water Street, which is the one that we're talking about here. The issue that is, uh, we're having there is that in the springtime, when you have a perfect storm of warm weather, rain, snow melt, it overwhelms that pump station for short periods of time, usually maybe once a year. Um, and it surcharges out of the manhole there beside the station. And so the, the D E P is requiring us to um, stop that from happening.
And so the, the grant is for, let me scroll back up here.
Grant is for half a million.
Okay, and then the total cost is one point five million, give or take.
Yeah, give or take. That's an estimate by the engineer.
Yep.
And I could add to that, uh, the project uh, is a compliance issue. This is not a voluntary project. We need it to be in compliance with the D E P. And uh, if I write Mike, Michael, about two thirds of the city sewage goes through that pump station.
That's correct. It services um, the other side of the river, the Suri Road, all the um, services along there. It also services all of the um, pump stations going towards Bangor, the whole, that whole side of the city all pumped to this one pump station. And this pump station then conveys it to the main pump station. Um, and then on to the plant.
Even if D E P would allow it, it's a bottleneck we can't afford because it would arrest development in the community very quickly.
Yes.
Will there be any interference with the pump station while this project is ongoing?
Um, no ma'am. Uh, so with this pump station, we have built into the infrastructure there what's called a bypass pumping setup. And so we will be bringing in portable pumps that will connect to the current wet well and pump around the station to the force main that goes to the main plant. And so once that is in place, we can do whatever we need to do with the pump station and the pumps. Cause we'll be removing them, putting new pumps in, new wet well, things of that nature. And then once we have that whole situation finalized up, running, ready to go, we can just simply switch away from the bypass pumping back to the um, new pump station and carry on.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions, comments?
Ready for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Move to approve, going into an engineering design contract with Woodard and Curran for the Water Street Pump Station Upgrade Project that allowed the city manager to sign all required documentation with an amount not to exceed one hundred eighty-three thousand dollars and to be funded from the bond proceeds and N B R C grant funding.
Second. Motion by Counselor Phillips, second by Counselor Blanchette. Any further discussion? Seeing then, all those in favor?
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion passes. What I should have said earlier that if, if there's a situation where somebody um, either is opposed or abstains, I'll do a roll call vote, so we capture that definitively. Um, but if it's unanimous, we'll just continue on this way.
Thank you all.
Thanks, guys. Have a great night.
Night.
Okay, so um, item sixteen, council order number zero five two zero zero seven, request to authorize the city manager to enter into agreement contract with V H B Incorporated for consulting services related to the bike um, head trail feasibility study for approximately forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars, of which fifty percent will be funded by the city, budgeted TIF funds and budgeted local roads funds. And the other fifty percent will be funded by the main D O T P P I grant program award.
Good evening, counselors. Uh, Jana Richards, Development Services Director. Um, I'm just gonna go back to the January council meeting. I was before you. Um, and the council approved the acceptance of a twenty-five thousand dollar main D O T planning partnership initiative grant to fund the bike head trail feasibility study to connect the city's rail trail with the Sunrise Trail. Um, the grant required a fifty percent local match, which the council authorized at that meeting to be evenly allocated between existing budgeted TIF and local road program funds. Um, so based on that approval from the council, city staff with guidance from the main D O T proceeded to draft and circulate a request for proposals to five firms who are listed on the main D O T's prequal list for firms with experience in planning and feasibility studies. Um, all five firms actually submitted proposals. A, a selection committee comprised of city staff, counselors and main D O T staff scored the applications and unanimously actually chose V H B to provide the necessary professional services to conduct the study. Um, the, the council has the proposed contract in your packet uh, for review. Given that V H B was the, was scored the highest by all members of the selection committee and that they became within the proposed budget for the study, which was not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Um, we are respectfully requesting that the council authorize the city manager to award the contract to conduct the feasibility study to V H B. I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
Counselors. No questions?
Mr. Chair, I moved to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with V H B Inc. Uh, for consulting services related to the bike pedestrian trail feasibility study to be funded with the twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the main D O T P P I grant program with twenty-five thousand in local match to be evenly allocated from existing TIF and local road programs funds.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second? Uh, motion by Counsel Kaplan, second by Counsel Grindel. Further discussion? Seeing then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna give a shout out to my parents because they're watching in Rhode Island right now. So I just wanted to say hi and thanks, guys.
Hi, Mom and Dad.
Nice people.
Item number seventeen, council order number zero five two zero zero eight, request to the finance director to withdraw up to thirty thousand dollars from capital reserves or professional services relating to the solar renewable energy R F P, including legal and or professional services relating to the solar renewable energy R F P, including legal and technical review as well as conducting due diligence. Andrew Cole.
Uh, as you all know, we, uh, submit, uh, we, uh, put out a request for proposals back in the fall to take advantage of the, uh, the new solar legislation that was put forth last July. I, we initially got nine proposals. We've been narrowing it down. And, uh, we're requesting the transfer of these capital reserves and the amount of up to thirty thousand dollars so we can hopefully complete this deal and bring back a project to you. Uh, this is highly technical stuff and our energy advisor and our legal advisors, uh, are invaluable in this process. So we'd like to complete it, bring it home and, uh, asking for the transfer out of the capital reserve account.
Counselors, questions, comments?
And I did discuss it with the finance director and I believe there's more than adequate funding in the capital reserve account to cover this thirty thousand dollar.
Yes, there's a hundred and three thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Thank you.
Roughly.
Roughly. I won't change my request to thirty thousand, ninety-nine dollars, though, but it will cover it.
And counselors.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the finance director to withdraw up to thirty thousand dollars from the capital reserves for, for professional services relating to solar energy, R F P, including legal and technical review as well as conducting due diligence.
Have a motion.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Miller, second by Counsel Moore. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
All those opposed? Abstaining? Motion passes. Item eighteen, adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
I didn't hear that. We'll stay in session. All those in favor?
Hi.
We are adjourned. Thank you.